Do I have a motion to exit executive session?
To make a motion to exit executive session?
Motion by Mrs. Usherwood, Mrs. Hoyes, second by Mr. Usherwood. All in favor? All in favor? All right. Do I have a motion to approve personnel A1, B1 through 16, and C1 through 13?
Second?
Motion by Mr. Usherwood, second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous? All right, welcome everyone. If you can, I ask you to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone to the August 19 regular board meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. We're going to be starting with a recognition tonight. I'd like to welcome Dr. Josh Lowe for the Health Services Hero Award.
So, thank you, Hadi.
Good evening, everyone. So, tonight we have the honor of recognizing two outstanding members of the Forsyth County Schools. We have Mr. Wyatt Gaynor, a South Forsyth Middle School student, and his teacher, Mrs. Ashley Kaufman. At just 12 years old, Wyatt has demonstrated extraordinary courage, composure, and compassion, qualities well beyond his years. This summer Wyatt was faced with a situation that most adults would have found very overwhelming. A five-year-old child was drowning at a local community pool, and without hesitation Wyatt jumped into action, pulling this unresponsive child out of the water, performing CPR, and calling 911 all by himself. His ability to stay calm and to think clearly in such a critical moment is nothing but short of remarkable. In Wyatt's words, he shared that he just zoned in in those moments. Because of his quick thinking and life-saving response, this child is alive and well today. What makes this moment even more notable is how Wyatt was prepared. He learned these life-saving skills in his sixth-grade healthcare diagnostic and support services course taught by Mrs. Ashley Kaufman. In her class, one of the standards is phlebotomy, which is the study of arteries and veins. Mrs. Kaufman made learning engaging and memorable by creating a rap song that her students would learn to remember how blood flows throughout the body. She ensures that her students leave the classroom not only with the knowledge but with the life skills of CPR, which truly saves lives. I am sure that Mrs. Kaufman never imagined that Wyatt would be putting those skills to use within weeks of being taught. It is really difficult to put into words just how remarkable Wyatt's actions were at 12 years old. To remain calm, to recall his CPR training, to act decisively in those critical moments just speaks to the kind of leader, friend, and community member Wyatt already is. Wyatt reminds us all that you do not have to grow to be grown to make such a change in lives. I'm happy to share that Wyatt plans to study medicine in the future, which we can all agree, he has a very bright future. Together, the story reminds us of their strength, resilience, and kindness that exist in our students and those who teach them. On behalf of Forsyth County Schools, we want to present a Health Services Hero Award. But before they come up, I know we have Mr. Sheriff Freeman here that would also like to say a few words.
Thank you, and thank you to BOE members for letting me be here. Got the opportunity to talk to Wyatt and his family just outside, just for a few minutes. And I had read this story. Lieutenant Martin Wyatt was one of our first responding deputy sheriffs on the scene and was so impressed that he wrote a very eloquent letter to me telling me that he thought Wyatt should be honored. In the public safety field that we work in, we issue a very rare award, and that is a life-saving award. It is the exact same award that I issue to deputy sheriffs who do exactly the name of it. It carries with it the honor that very few men and women in public safety, much less in the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, carry. So, for a 12-year-old, I've only issued one of these to a non-law enforcement member. And so, if I may, for the life-saving actions that were directly responsible for sustaining or saving a human life, the office of the Forsyth County Sheriff awards the life-saving award to Wyatt Gaynor. So, congratulations, young man. I'll turn it back over to you, and we'll do the presentations.
Perfect, Wyatt. There you go. Thank you. So proud.
So, young man, you can turn around because they're going to take pictures. That is your actual medal that goes with it.
All right, Mom gets to go first.
Yes, absolutely. And Mrs. Ashley Kaufman. We do want the rap song.
Are you going to rap?
Proud principal, mom and dad. And then, right over here, y'all. All right, one, two, three. Good job. Well done.
I'd just like to point out that South Forsyth Middle is in my district, so we produce only quality in that area. Thank you, Ms. Tuck. Good job, Wyatt.
I can say that's the best meeting start I've ever been to.
Yeah. All right. Next up is public participation on agenda items. I believe we don't have any tonight, Ms. Mayo. All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Have the members received the documents in question? Any questions, concerns? All right, I'll seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second motion?
Motion by Mr. Usherwood, second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous? All right. Next up on the agenda is presentation and discussion items. First is Mr. Mike Evans, who's manning the cameras somewhere. Review of policy IFBG, Internet Acceptable Use. There he is. He's a man of many hats.
Sorry, I was getting up and I dropped my glasses, so. I am just giving you all a brief policy update. The policy that we're updating today is IFBG. This is our Internet Acceptable Use policy, and this is in line with Senate Bill 351, which was Protecting George's Children on Social Media Act of 2024. That legislation had several things that have come into effect this year, and we'll have a couple of updates in the springtime, as well as the state DUE providing additional updates. This policy really provides a few different elements. Number one, requiring districts to annually submit our acceptable use policy to the State Board of Education for review. They'll be providing guidance and feedback along the way. But it also integrates a variety of elements within our digital citizenship program. They are adding elements to promote discussions around social media struggles, challenges that come along with that with their students for grades six through 12. So, this policy update includes that language as well and does some cleanup language to align with the state language as well. But this policy will sit out there for public feedback until our next scheduled board meeting next month. Any questions for me?
So, this update is state mandated. It's a legislative update. And maybe you don't know the answer to this. Maybe, Dr. Young, you know, but do we commonly send policies on an annual basis to the state for review?
Do we send them to the state?
Isn't that what you said?
Yes, right. Yeah, so annually now with this law, annually every school district will be providing the State Board of Education with a copy of their board-approved acceptable use policy, and will also be reporting on the technology medium that will be used for content filtering and protecting against social media as well.
But no, that's not the norm.
There's a variety of several other... The bill's extensive. But it also provides laws against social media companies to require them to solicit parental feedback or approval for access of children underneath the age of 16 on a social media platform. So, they're starting to get some teeth in it as well.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, comments? All right, this will sit for 30 days, and then the vote will be taken.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Next up, my personal favorite part of the evening, the financial report with our CFO, Mr. Larry Hamel. It's true.
Tonight, we're going to discuss the July 2025 financial statements. This will be the first month of the 2026 period. As always, we keep goal five in mind. So, we started the month off with about $182 million in cash, ended the month about $146 million. This time last year, we had about $152 million. I'll get into why that number has decreased in a minute. Just for some KPIs, you can see the 25 data on this two graphs, both for cash position and fund balance position. As you can see, the cash position is slightly less than 25, and our fund balance is definitely less than it was 25, and I'll explain that in a minute as well, why that's like that. For revenue-wise, we collected about 4.37% of total revenue that we had budgeted for this time of year. Last year was about 4.59, so we're slightly behind on that, but not by much. And you can see here, it's on par with where we were in July of last year as well. And you can see the majority of this, of course, for this time of year would be QB. As we get into October, November, most of it will be property tax. And then versus the actual budget, we're actually a little bit ahead of schedule. On the expense side, what I want to point out to you is first is the 11.23% expense rate, which seems very high, but I will explain why it's that high this time of the year. This time last year was actually 10.37. It was high for last year as well. And the point I need to point out is, several years ago, we reserved about $33 million to pay for debt service, lower than millage rate by 1 mil for debt service. We used some of that this month interest-wise to pay some of the interest payments. The other thing we reserved out last year and the year before was money for the Mashburn Extension. That project is heavily into the process, and we moved about $8.6 million for July out of a general fund for the reserves that we promised to fund 301. So, you can see under the transfers to other funds, it's $10.7 million. It's a combination of those two things. Reserves, we moved over to Fund 301 for Mashburn, and about $2 million we moved over as well for debt service payments based on the payments that were due August 1st. So, that right there is not in line with the budget because of what the reserve amounts were. Any questions on that? Okay. As you can see, we're ahead of schedule. We would be on July of this time of the year. And just again, to point it out, if you look at the kind of like, I don't know, we call that purplish-gray, purplish... What's a good name for that color? Moth? Okay, I'll go with that. $10.7 million breakdown. Typically, that number is almost nonexistent. And we're ahead of schedule on budget with this particular item as well in terms of the expenditures for this time of the year. If we get into the debt service cash analysis... Last year, we had SPOS 5, about $1.6 million, but we closed that account out when we closed SPOS 5 last year. So, this year, we just have the debt service and debt service LGIP account. We just got done making huge payments, so the balances in those are very low. This time last year, we had about $945K. Right now, we got $310,000 basically in those accounts. The SPOS 6 is down to $5.4 million. We just made a lot of payments in June or July for these two funds, closing out the 13 projects that Matt's been working on, and that brought that number down significantly. As well as, SPOS 6 also contributed a large portion of money to the payments in July. This will be the last time we use SPOS 6 funds to make a debt payment. There's no more SPOS 6 money going towards that as well. The balance last year was about $27.8 million in SPOS 5 account, TV SPOS 6.
So, the rest of that SPOS money goes to pay for the projects we have remaining?
Correct. We no longer collect any money for debt services, SPOS 6. On the special revenue funds, it's first month of a new year. Now, typically, the federal year ends September 30th, so we still have carryover activity that's going on for '25, and we officially really don't start the '26 year until October 1st. So, what you're seeing there really is nothing but the activity for the carryover portion of the federal funds. On the capital projects and school food services, you can see the payout I was talking about, about $17 million. And we transferred some money in to cover that, about $13 million, came from a couple of different sources to pay for that. And we transferred out about $4.5, which is the money we paid towards interest for August 1st. That money came out. The total cash account we balance we have is about $7.4. This time last year, we had about $16.5 million in school food services is down to about $20.5, and last year, we had about $2 million more in that account, about $22.6. On the investment summary, we still have a good chunk of money sitting in our general fund LGIP account, about $81.6. We had about $79.5, so we're doing a good job of taking care of our cash flow that way. Debt service, we got about $639. We had about $20K last year. LGIP account for school nutrition, so they can earn a lot of interest, about $16.2, about $15.5 last year. And of course, the SPOS 6 account is really low this time because of the money went out, and we're down to $5.4 versus the $27.8 last year. Good news on the collections. Instead of being six months in advance on SPOS collection, now we're only three months in advance. So, for SPOS 6, that's kind of gone to our advantage, which means we should get more money out of SPOS 6 than we were planning to on the collection rate. In total, we have about $103 million versus about $124 last year. As you can see, the collection this month was a little bit less than it was last month by about $100,000, but we still have about 4.3% ahead of schedule from the previous year. On the high school accounts, we have about $4.3 million. The activity is normal for this time of year. We had about $4 million last year.
The elementary schools, right?
I'm sorry, elementary schools. I apologize. On the middle schools, we are at 1.9. We're about $2 million last year. The high schools, we're at 7.5. We're about 6.2, so we're a little ahead of schedule in the high schools. But again, the receivables and disbursements are normal for this time of the year. In total, there's about $13.8 million total in the school accounts. The biggest change is the high school has a bigger percentage this time of the year than it did last year. It was only about 50% last year versus 55, just because they have more cash in their accounts. And that's the financials for July 2025. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Hamel. All right, next on the agendas are action items. We have one item on the agenda. It is a proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month 2025. Mr. Usherwood is going to read the proclamation into the record, but I'd like to invite Eddie Guytung up to the podium while we work through the process. We're going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and then you guys will have a couple of minutes, and then we'll take the vote.
Proclamation, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month 2025. Whereas childhood cancer remains one of the most serious health challenges faced by families with thousands of children across the nation diagnosed each year, and whereas cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among children and adolescents, leaving a lasting impact not only on those diagnosed, but also on their families, classmates, educators, and communities. And whereas many children who survive cancer continue to face long-term health challenges, underscoring the importance of continued research, early detection, and comprehensive care. And whereas September, recognized nationally as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, provides an opportunity to highlight the bravery of children fighting this disease and to honor those whose lives have been lost. And whereas Forsyth County Schools recognizes the role of schools and communities in supporting children and families affected by cancer through compassion, advocacy, and awareness. And now, therefore, we, the Board of Education, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Forsyth County Schools, and encourage our students, staff, families, and citizens to work together in raising awareness, supporting affected families, and strengthening the hope of a future without childhood cancer.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for recognizing September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month with the proclamation. Each year, nearly 16,000 children and adolescents in the United States are diagnosed with cancer. While survival rates have improved, cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease among children. Sadly, that reality touched our community this past weekend when we lost a child to pediatric cancer. That loss is a painful reminder of why this awareness matters so deeply. This proclamation is more than words. It honors the bravery of the children fighting, remembers those we've lost, and highlights the important role that schools and communities play in supporting families through compassion, advocacy, and awareness. On behalf of the American Cancer Society and the Relay for Life volunteers, I want... we want to sincerely thank you, guys, for shining the light on this important cause and for calling on our students, staff, families, and citizens to work together. By raising awareness and supporting research, we move closer to a world where every child has a chance to grow up healthy and cancer-free. You all will be gifted a little cancer pin, so please wear that proudly for the month of September. Thank you, guys.
Motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. Usherwood. All in favor? Unanimous. We'll come down and take a quick picture with you guys. All right, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is points of information. Have the members received the information? Any questions, comments, concerns, anything to add? All right. That brings us to public participation on non-agenda items. We have two speakers on the list tonight. Real quickly, I'll run through the rules. They're not very complicated. You're allowed three minutes to speak. Up next to the podium, there's a timer there. When the light is flashing green, that means you're good on time. When the light starts to flash yellow, that's warning you, you have 30 seconds left. And when it starts to scream at you and flashing red, that means your time is up. So, we'll ask that you finish your thoughts and end your remarks. First up is Mr. Jared Cruchel.
First off, point of clarification. Last month was my first absence in four years, not three, as reported. I hope to make this next week even longer, and I hope you're all here to share it with me. A few short notes regarding the last working meeting before I get on a soapbox. I'm very happy to hear that even though some federal funding is delayed, at worst, we're looking at a $1.5 million impact from possible federal funding changes. The fact that we are not at more risk is a testament both to the fiscal and social responsibility of our Forsyth County Schools. And the other one that I want to talk a little bit about is that there are a couple of links that were broken on the website, and they were fixed in between like when I looked at them this afternoon to now. I was trying to show him that there was an error, and there was no more error. So, I got to look like the guy that's always asking for computer help for once. Which brings me up to the topic I'd like to bring up today, the inherent contradiction between equal opportunity employment and affirmative action. The board policy reads, "The Forsyth County Board of Education does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, national origin, religion, age, disability, or sex in its employment practices." This clear, direct statement makes no caveats. People are only judged on merit, which is the way it should always have been. But sadly, after the 1964 Civil Rights Act, the avowed racist Lyndon Johnson created the terrible policy of affirmative action by executive order. Until that order was revoked on January 21st, 2025 by President Trump, I had not fully considered just how normal this systemic racism seemed to me. For over 50 years, I lived in a world where there were legal racial quotas, and I was told over and over again that somehow this wasn't racist. But indeed, it was, even as the racists tried to obscure their quotas by finding other proxies that they could use for race, their goal stayed the same, discrimination based on race. The cognitive dissonance of being told for decades that only content of character should matter, but then we still had to judge people by skin color to make things fair burned of injustice. While affirmative action in college admissions was struck down by the Supreme Court in 2023, we haven't yet had a similar clear-cut case in general employment law. I'm sure it will be coming, but I'm glad that in the meantime, Forsyth County Schools have such a clear, unambiguous stance against affirmative action. This isn't to say things have ever been perfectly fair, horrible things, even right here in Forsyth County have been perpetrated against people on the basis of race. In 1912, over 1,000 black residents were terrorized and driven from their homes, not to return in any real numbers for almost 80 years. But the tide turned in the late 1990s, and we've now built Forsyth County into a home for everyone, regardless of skin color. This didn't happen because of quotas or because we terrorized white people in retaliation for the sins of their ancestors, but because we stopped putting race front and center of everyone's identity. To put it in crude terms, you don't fight rape with more rape, and you don't fight racism with more racism. You just put a stop to the sin. So, I'd like to thank the board for their due diligence in going through all the policies we have and for reaffirming our commitment to the dream of Martin Luther King Jr., to judge people by the content of their character, not the color of their skin. So, on that, thank you very much, and I'd love to buy lunch for anyone who disagrees with me.
All right, next up is Mr. Chris Ward.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Chris Ward, and I would like to thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight. I'll be brief and assure you my comments are positive and not directed at a failure of any kind. I'm a first-grade student at Chattahoochee Elementary, and my heart has always leaned towards charity. And while my faith encourages me to do those things quietly, I feel compelled to share tonight, because without speaking up, the reasoning behind it wouldn't matter. For the past two years, I've built a relationship with my son's teachers and the cafeteria staff so that I could use my son's lunch account to purchase ice cream for the students in his class who cannot afford it. This small act has allowed his class to share joy and excitement of Friday Ice Cream Day without singling out those students who might otherwise be left upset and in tears over something completely outside of their control and their guardian's financial situation. I understand that each school has different policies. Some allow these treats to be purchased only on... Some allow these treats to be purchased only on Fridays, while higher-grade levels have the option to purchase them daily. Funding a county-wide program for all grades may be unreasonable, but I would like to suggest a modest targeted program for kindergarten and first-grade students who qualify for free or reduced lunch. Based on the general research, Forsyth County Schools has approximately 6,000 to 7,000 students in kindergarten and first grade, with about 20% qualifying for free or reduced lunch. That means around 1,300 students could benefit from such a program. Bulk popsicles on the consumer market, likely even less through the school's food distributor, cost about $10 per 200 popsicles. That comes out to a 5 cents each. Supplying eligible students across the entire county would cost about $65 per Friday. Over a full school year with roughly 31 Fridays, when students are in school, the estimated cost would be about $2,000. Of course, these are rough numbers, and the cost may vary slightly, but we're talking $2,000. This program could be county-funded, or alternatively, it could be structured as a donation program where community members can contribute to cover the expense. I would like to thank the board, along with the teachers, staff, and administrators, who work tirelessly to support our students every day. I bring this idea forward not as criticism, but as a way to spread a little more joy and inclusion to our youngest learners. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. All right, that concludes the public participation portion on the agenda, and in fact, the agenda itself. So at this time, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
A motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. McCall. All in favor? Unanimous. Your first motion of the night. Congratulations, Mr. McCall.
I had a motion. This is my second, and...